Good evening all and welcome to Fort Mill's Town Council Regular Meeting for March the 8th of 2021. Thank you so much for joining us. We are doing this meeting online. So I will ask all of council and I will do it myself. If I'm not speaking, I will turn my speaker off. So that we have the best sound quality that we can. Welcome everyone. Beautiful day today. We have a short meeting this evening, but an informative one. So let's see, we will do a pledge of allegiance and then Ronnie, would you like to do our invocation? Okay, I can't.
Yes, 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 I will.
All right, let's do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ronnie?
Fathers, we come to you tonight. We thank you for the many blessings of life. We thank you for continuing to keep us safe. We pray that you'll be with us tonight, that you'll guide us and direct us in the way that we need to go. Help us to do what's right for the citizens of Fort Mill and bless each and every one that's represented here tonight. And we give you the praise and glory and honor for it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ronnie. All right, council members, we have a full council present this evening. You have all received the minutes of the February 22nd Town Council Meeting. I'll need a motion and a second.
I make a motion to accept.
Do we have any additions, deletions, or changes to be made to these minutes? Okay, hearing none. The motion on the table is to accept and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, thank you so much. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. To maintain social distancing, citizens will only be allowed into council chambers one at a time to give their comments. Davey, do you have anyone present that would like to speak with us? Turn your speaker on.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, we have a couple that have signed up to speak. So if you'll bear with a moment, I'll set my computer up and we'll bring them in one at a time.
Thank you so much. Davey, will you make sure that they give us their name and their address?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Hello?
You're on the speaker.
Tell me when I need to start.
You start now.
All right, my name is Dara Farley, 1387 Williams Road.
Okay.
Carol's Automotive and Wrecker Service and Body Shop. First of all, I say thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight during this closed course meeting. I'd like just to give you my ideas on how the wrecker services are being run and the rates that are currently being charged by the town. And all I ask is opportunity to let you know what I feel like's going on. The size of Fort Mill, as you all know, has grown drastically in the last five to 10 years. It's probably at least three times now bigger than it was at the last increase, which was February the 15th of '08. And the boundaries have moved almost to Carolways Boulevard on the north side. And on the east side, it's gone almost to the Andoby Bridge Road, to the bridge at Sugar Creek. East on 160, it's gone out to the Panhandle. And going toward Rock Hill, it's not uncommon for us to have to go to the Catawba River Bridge or beyond. Where we used to have just a small little area downtown that we covered. And we'd come up here in just a matter of a few minutes, hook up and be gone. And we feel like that the rates of $125 is no longer sufficient for that kind of travel time and going and working a wreck and cleaning up all the plastic and glass from an accident. We feel like that needs to be changed. And we just ask you to consider that and consider what our expenses really are. By the time we get to paying a driver and driving a vehicle that gets six miles per gallon, that doesn't leave much in the way of a profit. We ask you to consider that. And that's basically all that I had to say. And again, I appreciate your time and hope you consider this and maybe make some changes for us. And thank you very much.
Mr. Farley? Before you leave, I would like to thank you and all of our folks that provide wrecker services to the town. It is an incredibly important role that we get those vehicles addressed, particularly when there's an accident, and get the roadways cleared and safe for others. So thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you lending the ear to this question too.
Yes, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I guess my colleague, longtime friend, Mr. Wallace Coleman will be coming in at this time. But thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
760 Old Nation Road, Fort Mill.
Hello, Wallace.
Hey, Gwen. How you doing, sweetheart?
Good, hon. How are you? Thank you for joining us. I know you wanted to speak with us, so you go right ahead.
One thing I'd like to know, how's your mama doing?
She's doing good. She got her second shot and doing really well. Thank you for asking, hon.
You still at home by yourself?
Well, I'm not gonna say on camera. She's rarely by herself ever.
Madam Mayor and council, I appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to our little... I've been recommended 48 years in Fort Mill. I used to have small trucks, 17-foot rollbacks. It got to where the vehicles got... People, instead of having small pickup trucks, they started buying big four-wheel drive trucks and big long four-wheel trucks. They take larger trucks to tow them. I just bought a new truck ago. It was $116,200. Fuel keeps going up. My insurance came due last month. $21,753 for three trucks. Got a letter from Progressive Insurance today. My insurance is going up another $200 because one of my drivers got a speed ticket last summer in his personal vehicle. So my insurance is going up because he drives well. The charges, which you know, the county and the state title toll, they have CHP. Their tow bills is $239. Record in storage is $37 per day. We'd like to, if we could, get in line with them because we needed to keep our stuff running. And when we have drivers going out at night, we have to pay them a third of the tow bill. So they get $30 and we get $6.6. And I appreciate any consideration you'd give us in helping us increase our fees. Again, I appreciate your time and trouble and thank you a lot.
Mr. Wallace, we appreciate you. I told Mr. Farley, it is really a safety issue for us, for you guys to do what you do. And we're greatly appreciative of the work that you do.
Okay, thank you, Gwen.
You take care.
Okay.
So Mayor, that's the only public comment or anyone signed up for public comments for tonight.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And that went really well. I could hear them well. Could you, council members, hear them well? All right, good. Alrighty then. There are no presentations for this evening and there are no old business items. So we will move into our new business item number one. An emergency ordinance extending prior temporary measures for the town council and other appointed board and commission members to participate in meetings electronically during the COVID-19 emergency. Chris Pettit is our person that manages this issue. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the business item number one.
All right, I got a motion from Jamie. Ronnie, are you seconding?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, Chris, are we simply extending what we have previously extended?
Yes, Mayor. This will extend our previous measures for another 60 days.
Alrighty. Council members, do you have any questions or concerns? All right, hearing none. The motion that's on the table is to approve and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, hearing none. Oh my goodness. Sorry, that's my computer, not my phone. It rings like, I'm sorry. All right, new business item number two. Consideration to increased wrecker service rotation fees. And this is in relation to the two folks that joined us for public comment. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number two.
Okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Davey, would you like to guide us through this?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you and good evening. Just wanted to, again, both of our speakers came in and provided some little bit of information on the wrecker services for the town of Fort Mill. But in the 2007, 2008 timeframe, town of Fort Mill implemented an ordinance that allowed for wrecker services to join a rotation list at the town of Fort Mill. And where our police department, if we experience an accident in town and they need to call a wrecker service, these services that have signed up for this rotation list, we, the police department, provide them someone, a guaranteed company that could actually come out and provide towing services at all hours of the day and night. This has been a very successful program over the years. As Mr. Farley mentioned before, the town set the maximum rate that a wrecker service could charge was $125 per call. Then there were some additional fees for storage that you could add, that could be added on. But the actual call itself to tow the vehicle away was $125. It was brought to staff's attention recently that our fees that we allow overall don't quite fall in line with our neighbors, our neighboring municipalities. So staff looked into it and what we found, if you look at the graph that's on the screen, you can see that we were at $125. The next nearest municipality was City of Rock Hill. They allow a maximum of $150 per call. City of Teguka by ordinance allows $185. And you heard Mr. Wallace speak, that York County and South Carolina Highway Patrol allow over $230, which is $239 for wrecker services. After reviewing the information and the logistics of the town of Fort Mill, it was, you know, staff looked at it, at all of the ranges of charges and is coming back to council with a recommendation that we, if council is willing to raise the fee, that maybe we look at the middle ground and match the City of Teguka, who is our closest municipality in distance, and at least meet their $185 maximum charge for a Class A wrecker service call. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Davey, this is Chris Moody. And just for clarification, I think this is a flat rate, no matter what time of day they go out, day or night, right?
That's correct. It's 24 hours.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, one comment I'd like to make too is they're responsible for cleaning up the area where a wreck is and at a time that almost picks up remnants of a body. And so, and then the driver gets half of what that... If we go to $185, the driver gets half of that and the wrecker service company gets the other half.
I think how they manage their business, other than to meet the requirements that the town sets forth to be in the rotation is certainly up to those folks. I do feel absolutely comfortable raising the amount of money that they can charge so that we're not the lowest around because these folks do a great service for us. I know that we're looking at a proposed amount of matching what Teguka offers at $185. If council sees fit, I'm fine moving above that. I just feel like, you know, we do need to honor the service that we do get from the folks that have served this community for so long.
Gwen, Mr. Ronnie, I was gonna suggest too, this is even 200.
An even 200?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
I would make a motion to second that, if that is a motion, Ronnie.
I can make a motion. I need to.
Well, we have a motion on the table to approve a consideration. Is Barry on the line or Chris?
I'm here.
I'm here.
How do we go about this, Barry, if we want to set the price?
Well, first of all, Davey, let me ask you a question. Are we doing this by resolution? Are we doing it by ordinance? How is this actually gonna take effect?
Barry, we're planning to do this by ordinance, so it would require two readings.
Okay, all right. So I think at this point, all that needs to happen is that, and I don't think a vote needs to take place. I think that council just needs to give direction to staff as to what target amount you all want to use for the fee. And then they can, you know, draft the ordinance and go through the process of adopting that at our next meetings.
Perfect.
Barry, this is... We presented the ordinance to them in draft form with $185 already written into the draft. So this is essentially first reading of that ordinance.
That's all fine and good, but that's not what the agenda says. The agenda does not call for a first reading of this ordinance.
Okay, so council members, I believe we've had a number put out in previous discussion and then Ronnie has suggested a number of 200. The motion on the table is to approve that staff provide consideration for this increase. Trudy, I believe you also said 200 was acceptable to you. Anyone else have any further comments?
I would just like to ask a question. Mr. Coleman mentioned the storage fees too. Is that part of the same ordinance or is it a separate ordinance or how is that handled?
It's all tied together and within the ordinance. And the fees themselves, I think I had provided council a few weeks back, a copy of the overall... It wasn't the ordinance, but it was the policy that we're working under since 2007, '08 timeframe. And there are, like I said, there's stores fees that are associated with it, which we fall in line with. That actual motion that, and policy that came about during that time also provided for wrecker class is A, B, and C. This is an A-class, which is a smaller. And then as the letters go up, so does the size of the wrecker in itself. But we fall in line with everyone else except the wrecker A. So we are, we will be looking to bring that into with our local, or with our local neighbors. So all the things are associated in that one ordinance.
Lisa, did that answer your question?
It did, thank you. And I know the other thing that I think I mentioned, Davey, and the information we had is just tracking so that it doesn't go so long before we review this. So that it's reviewed whether we decide annually or every three years, come up with some type of process to be sure this doesn't get overlooked.
That's a good, that's a good point. Ms. Cook, we will review this annually around our budget process.
I think that's what we had talked about previous. Okay, anybody else have further comments?
Well, I'm also in $200.
200?
Yes.
Okay. I think Larry's saying he agrees, moving it to 200 even. All right, the motion is to move forward, giving our staff the right to present to us an ordinance change. And it appears that the majority of staff would support a $200 fee. If you're in agreement with that as the motion, I know the motion didn't include a figure. So the motion is to approve for staff to come back to us with an ordinance. Everybody in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, please say nay. All right, we'll get that back in our next meeting, I feel certain. All right, Davey, our information discussion session is on Capitol Projects Update and we look forward to hearing all the good stuff.
Thank you, Mayor. I will say I spent a couple hours out on the Walter Wilda Laisha Park site today with our engineer over the project and with the contractor that's actually doing the work. And there's some very positive movement going on with our Walter Wilda Laisha Park upgrades project. I'd like to begin with that project for the Capitol Projects update. The, let's start with the, what I'm excited about right now is the restrooms at the one... We've got two restrooms in this project. One is located in the Walter Wilda Laisha Park itself. The other one is located Calhoun Street Park. And it's the one on the right. The one on the left is the one in the Walter Wilda Laisha Park. They are coming along well. We walked through them the day and I will say we are down to very... The minor details to complete this work and to turn it over to our citizens and visitors for their use. So we anticipate, again, some of these items are very small, but we need to make sure that everything is done properly before we actually accept these two buildings. So the work we anticipate will be completed this week, since we have good weather. And we will be looking at maybe doing a final walkthrough early next week. And with that, everything looks well. We will, again, open these up to the public. Right now, they're working on landscaping and cleaning up the facility. And then a couple of small items they still have to do on their list, the punch list. But other than that, we're very excited about it with... These restrooms are a long time in the making for these two parks and they will serve our citizens and visitors well. And we can't wait to get those open. I was also out there and if you've been by the park lately, you've noticed that we've got some new parking areas around the park. I've got some photos here depicting those parks. The one on the photo to the left, parking lot, the new parking lot for the Calhoun soccer field. And that parking lot has been, is been, is a major upgrade from where it was before. It will, again, we did the final punch list today and there's just a few minor issues that have to be addressed and we'll be opening this up to the public. It'll be ready to go for our soccer practices and soccer games over the next, in the next few weeks. So the photo on the right are the diagonal parking spaces that are run along Argy Street. If you've noticed, you know, the architect and engineer came up with a great plan to work around existing trees that were already in the park. The parking spaces fall right in and fit in well with the park itself. And I'm very pleased with the outcome from these spaces. So I'm sure you've noticed that they get used quite frequently already. So our citizens are very excited about them and have already started using them. We expect, there's only a couple of minor issues that have to be addressed here, but we will be taking these over very soon as well. One parking lot I did not provide a photo for was Parking Lot Seeth, which is just down the road on Argy Street. It's located beside the substation and adjacent to the entrance into the lower portion of the park where the amphitheater is being constructed. I didn't provide a photo on it because they were using it to park some of their construction vehicles last week and it didn't make for a very pretty picture. But the overall parking lot itself is very nice and we'll be opening it up very soon as well. So I think all in all, we're looking at over 70 spaces, new spaces for this park, which is a, if you enjoy this park and have enjoyed it for just a short period of time or for many years, that was probably the biggest need that we've had over the years is adequate parking for this beautiful park. So we're very excited about having them installed and we're looking forward to turning them over full-time to the public. Also, the amphitheater site itself, we've got some good news on it. The weather has cooperated long enough for them, for the construction or the contractor to drive the pilings into the ground. And if you can see in the photo, about just left of center, there's, looks like power poles laying and stacked up there. Those are, that's basically what it is. They're driving poles, power poles into the ground. Certain, the depths that are required by our geotech engineer, they have, I just found out this afternoon that they have completed and they've driven all 159 for this, just for the footprint of the amphitheater itself. So during that, during that time, they were driving these into the ground, they did experience some debris that was in the ground that they had to remove before they finished their installation of the pilings. So I do, you know, because of that, I expect there to be some increased costs with that. We do not know at this time what that is, but the contractor will be getting with us soon in the next few days or so to let us know what that is. And I can provide council a better update at my next, during my next updated update for this project. But I will say, because the pilings are in the ground now, they will be pouring concrete in the next couple of days. And from that point on, we will be above ground. So we anticipate the construction of the amphitheater to go much smoother than it has to date. And the contractor, they are very excited about that as well. So I think for our citizens and visitors, they'll notice the construction of this amphitheater as it gets above ground and it'll bring a little more excitement than we have right now with just the restrooms and parking. So it's very exciting times for that. I will also share, as I did in the last, in one of my previous updates, all of the, I think we have eight adult swings that were installed out there. They have all been installed and are for use. So we've done our final walkthrough. They all look great. We just have a little bit of brick work to do around one, but it's still, we still have it open to the public to be used until we can get the cosmetics of that one completed. But, you know, it's, if you've walked out to the park, walked around the walking track and just sat in one, any one in the park has a beautiful view. So it's a, it's a very nice enhancement to the park itself. And we see them being used quite frequently now. I would like to give an overall update to the project as far as the completion. Again, the, the issues with the weather and getting the amphitheater itself above ground has slowed the process somewhat, but the overall project, the completion date for the site work is fourth quarter. The timeframe right now is early October. That's with the landscaping and all. We anticipate the amphitheater being completed, maybe even in the September timeframe. But the overall... But the overall project itself, where the contractor has completed and gone, looks like it'd be early fourth quarter, whenever that is, we experience that. That's if everything goes well. But again, it's dependent upon the weather, but it should not, the weather hopefully will not affect us the way it has to date. The project is currently three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, a little over that, over budget. Again, the cost associated with that was poor soil conditions, removal of underground debris, rerouting of an unknown eight-inch water line, water main, that is, as well as cost associated with that rerouting, and how it affected our sanitary sewer lines and our stormwater lines that were in the vicinity as well. We also experienced in that same area, because the restroom's close to the footprint of the amphitheater site, we experienced some poor subsurface for that facility and had to make some corrections to it as it was being constructed. And, and a big chunk of this cost is associated with the resurfacing of Calhoun Street parking lot. Again, that parking lot, we had failures in it during the construction process due to, it was, there, there was no true base to the overall parking lot itself. And so it only had about an inch and a half, inch to an inch and a half of asphalt on a, on a very poor base, and so it could not withstand the, the rigors of the construction itself. So we needed to replace it. It meets, it currently meets our town standards, and we should not have to worry about this parking lot for quite some time. So it has been constructed properly, and we're very excited about that. I will say, in our Capitol Projects funds, we do have, the town does have the available funds to cover these overages for this particular project. With that, if anyone has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those before I move on.
I have a question, Davey.
Yes, sir.
First, I'd like to say the architecture is just wonderful. They, they look so good down there, particularly at night with the lights on. But do you plan on having operating hours for the restroom? Are they gonna be up twenty-four hours a day, or have you thought about that yet?
Well, yes, sir. I've, I've put some thought to it. We haven't really landed on a definite answer yet. I think we, you know, we will have some lighting at the site, and, but we do not have lighting around the entire oval walking track. So I think, you know, initially, we will play it by ear with summertime. You know, we'll, we'll have plenty of daylight hours that we can operate them. So we'll probably lock them right at dark, or dusk dark. But we, you know, we can adjust that if needed. I would like to think that we could leave them open twenty-four hours a day and there not be any vandalism to them. But I think at least initially, we probably would want to lock those at dusk dark.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any, any other questions?
Any further questions? Anybody has? I like Larry believe that the design is just absolutely pleasing. I'm very, very happy. And I do hate that the progress has, you know, had its issues with our weather. I think the monsoons have changed countries and locations, and we've had plenty of rain. With that, anybody have any further questions?
Well, rain, and we, we all knew that it was gonna be a tough site to build on. A lot of people don't know, but that is where the old mill sat. So there's all kinds of debris and whatnot in the ground. So just, everybody was wondering, why don't you just put a footer in? Well, we, we couldn't just put a footer in. So it's gonna be beautiful when it's done. I'm very happy with the progress, and considering what is in that ground, that we haven't gotten much further over the budget than we have, is a testament to how well those construction outfits are doing.
I, I will share a little bit of information that was very interesting to me today. I was out taking photos of the, of the pilings or the poles, the footings for, for the amphitheater site. And it, there was, was there in the past that was associated with the mill, had footings as well in that vicinity, which no one knew about. So as they got down to a certain depth, there are, they're, they're called pilings, but they're, again, they're power poles. There were some much larger ones that happened to fall right in the track that our, the contractor was digging. So we have a much larger and stable piling in some of the locations out there that no one knew about. So it's just, it's even more of an enhancement to that footprint of the, the amphitheater. But I thought it was really interesting, and I'll share some photos with you, that, of those, of those pilings, it just happened to be, fall in the right location for this amphitheater. So it was almost like it was meant to be. All right. I don't have any more questions. Yes, ma'am.
Dave, may, maybe the pilings being in the right place made up for some of the water lines and all those other problems that, that were incurred early on.
We always want to look on the bright side of things, missing something.
Right.
Right.
That's right.
That is correct.
All right. Well, thank you so much for those updates. We greatly appreciate it. With that, we have gone through our agenda for this evening. Trudy, do you have anything for the good of the whole?
Mayor, if, if I do have a couple more updates, that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I saw Walter Lash and thought we were finished.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to provide a, an update to everyone real quickly that, again, the, just wanted to remind everyone, the Banks Athletic Park project did go out for bid bids. We did have a public bid opening on February twenty-fifth, but just wanted to provide an update. Those construction bids are still under review, so I have no information to share tonight on those, except we are still in that process. The YMCA, the complex tennis courts, staff has looked, is still studying the site surveys and working on projected construction cost for that site as well. Our wastewater treatment plant, you can see the photos on here, it is still moving along quite well. We can provide a little more in-depth update in our next meeting, but it is still on schedule and on budget, and the projected completion date is the first quarter of 2022 for it. We also have sewer lift station projects that's being partially funded through our Rural Infrastructure Authority grant for two lift stations, our Popple Street Pump Station and our, what was Old Charlotte Highway Pump Station is now out along Old Nation Road. They are currently still being under construction, and they are on schedule and on budget as well, and expected to be completed by, in the third quarter of this year, 2021. And so, Mayor, that, that concludes my, my updates for our Capitol Projects.
Didn't mean to rush you. Thank you so much. That'll teach me just to look at the computer, right? All right. Thank you so much. Those are wonderful pieces of information for all of us to feel good about. Now, Trudy, do you have anything you'd like to add to the good of the whole?
I'm just grateful for the sunshine and, and the warm weather.
Wonderful. Thank you. Jamie?
Just want to let everybody look at the news feed and everything with the Strawberry Festival. We are still doing that. It's virtual, or I guess you could call it semi-virtual. Had a couple of people call me and ask me if we were gonna go live again this year, but with the construction at the amphitheater still going on, and we didn't have the guidance from the governor at this point, that we're just gonna go continue on with our virtual plan for that. Still gonna be awesome. It's gonna be great. I know a lot of people are excited about it. And get out and enjoy all this good sunshine we're gonna have for the week. It's gonna be in the seventies all week long.
Great, great. Ronnie?
I'm good. Everybody got the picture I sent the other night with the bathroom with the lights, lights shining all around it? So I was just riding by, and I happened to see you, and I said, I gotta get a picture of that. But I'm good. Everything's good.
Thank you. Chris Moody?
I'm good. I agree with Trudy. Just glad to, glad to see some sunshine and, and some bright days ahead this week. It'll be, it'll be nice. So glad I could serve with each one of you. Thank you for the Capitol updates, Davey. It was, a lot of people forget that infrastructure is just not roads. It's water towers, it's fire departments, it's town halls, it's, you know, water meters, a lot of different things go into the operation of town. And thank you, staff, for everything you do to, to keep it going for us. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
All righty. Lisa?
I want to thank staff for the improvements in the presentations that we're doing. I really think that the public is going to appreciate this as well, being able to see the pictures with the updates. So thank you for making that happen. Also want to say, everyone, please continue to keep in mind COVID, and that it is still out there, and washing hands and masks as much as possible. As I stand in a school that will be full-time come Monday, our kids need it, our teachers need it. So continuing doing what we're doing to lessen that curve and continue to stay safe as we continue moving through a, hopefully, new and more fun 2021, where we can get out and enjoy the sunshine and each other. So thank you.
All righty. Larry?
I'd like to, first of all, thank Harris Teeter for allowing us to partner with them on these virus shots. I had mine that first day about nine-thirty, and I was looking at the old gym from the inside, and I'm so glad we decided to keep it and just renovate it, because that's a remarkable structure, I think. And it's already serving a useful purpose for us, is all I gotta say.
All righty. Thank you, Larry. I would like to say thank you to our staff for coordinating with Harris Teeter. It is wonderful when we have partnerships in which we both can bring something to the table to serve our community in something that is a need for all. I am grateful that we were able to not only provide the facility and do what we could with traffic and parking. We need to publicly thank the American Legion for their ability to allow that overflow parking. You know, it, it's great when people work together for the good of the whole. So I am, I'm very happy to say that the town of Fort Mill, the Legion, and Harris Teeter, our staff, and everyone that worked. I got my second shot this past week in Rock Hill. There are many Fort Mill and T G K volunteers that are working on that facility that has continued to give shots. They're fabulous people that are doing this, and I'm extremely grateful for the, the comfort level that the people themselves are providing. Facilities are great, shots are great, but you know what? The people that are putting themselves out there as volunteers to do that are by far so appreciated. So if you haven't been thanked for your volunteer service, please know that we are all grateful. On the flip side of things, Fort Mill looks terrible from litter. And I want to be the first and the loudest to say that it's not, it, it's not the town of Fort Mill that's throwing this trash on the sides of the roads or dumping it on the bypass. You know, with the weather that we've had, I feel certain that we do not have as many good citizens out there picking up trash and bagging it as we have in the past, because it's just has, the weather hasn't been conducive. The rain certainly has contributed by, you know, giving way to collecting the trash through the flow of water. However, the trash on the side of the road is because people are being careless to throw things out their windows or not dispose of things properly. It needs to stop. I, I don't like seeing our community look this way, and we're gonna have to, I know we're talking in terms of trying to schedule something where we will have a community cleanup, but by all means, the people out there bagging that stuff will not be the same people that are throwing it out the windows. So yes, I'm being very forceful, but I think it's absolutely necessary. If you see somebody or you know someone that's throwing trash out the windows, it is absolutely not acceptable practice in this community. So I did roll down the window. There was a nice man out on the bypass at Dobie's and the bypass. I've seen him twice in the last two weeks, working hard to clean up that area and make it look presentable. Please, folks, do your part, and we will bring to you some information in which we can all participate and help make Fort Mill look like the Fort Mill we're all used to. So with that, as always, thanks to our staff and our employees and to each of you for the hard work that you do to help keep Fort Mill a great place to live. Do I have a, a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
All right. All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. And with that, I hope you have a great evening.